Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 5th meeting of the Milford Planning and Zoning Board. If we could please have a pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands.
Nation under God.
A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Meg, if you would please call the roll.
Sure. Ms. Austin.
Present.
Mr. Castignolli.
Here.
Mr. Kater. Jim's here for sure.
Yeah.
He was. Mr. Collegian?
Present.
Ms. Kearney?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Mortimer?
Present.
Mr. Sadi?
Present.
Mr. Zaharides?
Here.
And Chairman Krish.
I am here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for being here and our first order of business is 57 Shell Ave, Zone R75, Petition of Cota Spodean Associates PC for a Coastal Area Site Plan Review to construct a single-family residence, Map 27, Block 444, Parcel 9, of which Randy J. Silverman is the owner, closed by December 9.
Right, Mr. Chair, we've been informed by the applicant that they would like to table this or postpone it till the next meeting.
Oh, okay. So that will not require any vote. It's at their request.
Correct.
Okay. Next order of business is a public hearing, proposed regulation change 21-6, Petition of the City of Milford for changes to Article 3, Section 363, accessory uses, closed by December 9, vote by January 13. David, if you would, give us a little background on this, please.
Sure. In the DO zone, we, which is the Design Office District, we have the primary use nets owner are office buildings. And those office buildings can have accessory uses such as restaurants, you know, health clubs, daycare centers. But the regulation is very specific in limiting access to those things to the occupants or the people who work in those office buildings. So what this proposed change would do is actually change the language to allow people who don't work there to utilize, if there's, if there's a health club or a restaurant or daycare, they could, they could use it without working in the building.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. So I would open up the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this matter?
If you do, please raise your hand either electronically or wave in, in, in the camera and I will recognize you. So is there anybody who would like to speak on this issue? I'm looking. I don't see anybody. I see no electronic hands going once. I see no electronic hands or anyone waving going twice. So, Mr. Chair, there doesn't appear to be anybody who would like to speak on this issue.
Okay, so then the public hearing is closed. Just as a little more background, there are circumstances where you have offices that in the past were traditional offices. But then they have like short use, like if you wanted to rent a a conference room or you wanted to use a cubicle intermittently, becomes complicated with that person now or entity allowed to use the health club or the restaurant. So I think this zone change or language change would would clarify that and also underpin the commercial property in the city to allow for expanded use and, and be able to monetize their property. So I think it's a good thing. Is there any member of the board that has anything they'd like to say?
Thank you, Mr. Krish. Mr. Sadi here, this is really a question for the record through you to Mr. Sulcus. Was this not heard recently by the Regulation Subcommittee and it was passed on to this board?
It most certainly was.
Okay, and then the question is, does it make a difference that when you use the term the petition of the city, does it make a difference that it came from the, from the Regulation Subcommittee to this board? Does it make a difference for purpose of either a motion or the record?
No, because if you recall, city staff identified the issue. We brought it to the Subcommittee. So, so in the end, whether it's the Subcommittee or city staff, you're sort of the city. So that's why it's represented that way.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Krish.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further comment or questions from the board, I'd hear a motion.
Mr. Castignolli, did you speak first? I'm sorry.
I would move that we approve the petition of the City of Milford for changes to Article 3, Section 3.6.3, accessory uses.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have, Mr. Kater's not muted. I mean, he's, he is muted.
You're still muted, Mr. Kater.
Who is, who is the second?
I think Peggy, wasn't it Peggy?
Yeah, Jim Kater is still muted.
Okay. All right, I'm muted now. Can I say something, Jim? I lost connection. I don't know what happened. Did you guys lose connection? Because I'm trying to reboot my laptop and I'm on my phone now. So I missed the first two minutes. Which was this about? I didn't see which, is this for the post mall?
No, 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 we're not there yet, Jim, so I'll review it with you. The first item of business was Shell Avenue and the applicant has asked to postpone that. The next order of business is proposed regulation change that would allow accessory uses in the commercial buildings of 6.6.3, to allow non-occupants of the building to use the accessory uses. Okay.
I have a question on a point of order. I assume that Mr. Kater had been muted, whereas he hadn't heard that item. So is he abstent, an abstention?
No, we're gonna refresh him on it.
Okay, so he can vote?
Yeah, as long as he feels like he's, you know, read about it or if he, I mean, he hasn't missed much actual explanation outside of David's sort of administrative summary, so to speak.
Okay. Could David say one more time? I hate to be a pain in the neck, but could he just say one more time? I'm still trying to, just trying to reboot my laptop and it's giving me a little trouble here.
Sure, no problem.
So, so basically, we, we, the public hearing for 26 dash, sorry, 21-6 involves a change in the DO zone involving accessory uses. Currently in the DO zone, which is Design Office, you have office buildings that have some accessory uses such as restaurants, health clubs, daycare centers, there could be other accessory uses. And the way the regulations are currently written, the only people who could really use those facilities are people who work in those buildings. So we identified that as an issue and staff recommended to the Regulation Subcommittee that that language should be changed to allow people from outside the office buildings to utilize it, to be able to go to the utilities, facilities, you know, if they choose.
Okay, I get it now. I'm, I'm, thanks, I appreciate that, folks.
And just to let you know, no one spoke at the public hearing either for or against it.
Okay. So we did, we did close the close the public hearing. We have a motion to approve and a second. And now there's any time for discussion. So if you have, if anyone has any further questions or comments, then now's the time.
Sadi here, does Mr. Castignolli have to indicate an effective date through Mr. Krish to this, to Mr. Sulcus, effective date of the amendment if proposed, if accepted tonight?
Yes, there, there, just to let the board know, there is one recommended in your motions.
Okay.
Would Mr. Castignolli accept an amendment to add the effective date of October 22 of 21?
Yes.
Okay, Peggy, your second is still good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
No further comments at this point by Sadi.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, Meg, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Ms. Austin. Mr. Castignolli.
Yes.
Mr. Kater.
Yes.
Mr. Collegian.
With the motion.
Ms. Kearney.
With the motion.
Mr. Moore.
With the motion.
Mr. Mortimer.
With the motion.
Mr. Sadi.
The motion.
Mr. Zaharides.
With the motion.
And Chairman Krish.
I am with the motion.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Next order of business is 201 Kings Highway, Zone R75, Petition of Michael Iakono of Signature Pools Inc. for a special permit for an in-ground pool within 25 feet of the mean high water at Map 59, Block 795, Parcel 12, of which Heidi and Jay Dworkin are the owners. Closed by December 9, vote by January 13. Yeah, the applicant has the floor. Is the applicant here with us?
Doesn't appear so. I can tell you what this is, Mr. Chair. It's actually very, very simple.
If the applicant's not here, then it goes to the next meeting.
Okay.
Applicant has to be here to represent, represent themselves.
Okay.
We'll keep it. Can we keep it open until the meeting's fully done in case they come later?
You can, you can, you can table it to the next meeting.
Well, if they show up tonight, we can hear it. I'd like, I'd like it to be that way if we can.
Either, either way, you can table it until the applicant either shows up tonight or at the next meeting.
Okay, without objection? Okay. Next order of business is 252-262 Depot Road, Zone LI, Petition of Michael Welsh, Revolution Milford LLC for a special exception for a basketball training facility, and Map 92, Block 705, Parcel 1E, of which MNDB LLC is the owner. And this was postponed from the last meeting. And it is closed by December 25th, vote by December 30th. David, if you would review the application?
Sure. Last time they came to you, there was some clarifications that they needed to, to make, which they had done. The applicant is proposing to put in a roughly 3,700 square foot basketball training gym at 252 Depot Road. The existing building and the rear building contain a mixture of warehouse, manufacturing, office, industrial space. There's, the property is large and there's a fence that's proposed that will be running between 252, which is where this application is, and 262, which is a large building next to it, effectively dividing the limited uses of the property to their respective sides of their fences. The applicant has updated the information submitted in accordance with the Board Meeting of 9/21/21. Sheet C-1IM1, which was revised to September 24th. The parking table lists the total number of parking spaces at 104 for 252 Depot Road. The actual number of spaces is 108, as depicted on the newly submitted parking count sketch received by 10, which was received today. The floor plans for the main building don't show the square footage reach of the tenant spaces. This would be preferred so we can determine if the aggregate number of the, on the parking table is correct. This is also needed for your building. But this doesn't really affect this application at this point because based on the information that's there, clearly there is excess parking for the proposed use. A portion of the site is, there's a, there's a corner of the site, the south, like this corner of the property is designated for horticultural company, company overnight parking and is not included in the parking account. This clarification was made by the applicant, so it's not to give the impression that the spaces were available for Revolution basketball use. The applicant submitted an approved and compliant front landscape area plan. And they said that they would agree to the city engineer's requirements in his letters that were presented last week. So they, they, they pretty much, you know, gave us the, enough information for you to, you know, make a determination.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board, Mr. Castignolli?
Yes, I, I believe last, last time we were, we came to the conclusion that there wasn't a plan for all the uses, you know, the parking for all these. But Dave, is there enough parking for all the proposed uses there?
Yes, according to the table that's there now. Right. On the square footage and the aggregate as it's proposed, there, there would be. And it's, and again, it's limited to the 252 side of the property. So that's all, that's all compliant.
That's compliant.
That's compliant.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Question, Mr. Sadi through you to Mr. Sulcus and, and following up on Mr. Castignolli's excellent question, there was a discussion that we might have to make a finding of parking adequacy. Mr. Sulcus appears now, we don't have to make that finding.
That is correct.
Thank you very much, Mr. Krish. Nothing further.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, this is a public hearing. So at this point, I would open this up to the public. For anyone who would like to speak to the issue, either raise your hand electronically or just wave in front of the camera and David Sulcus will be the gatekeeper.
Okay, I raise your hand electronically if you'd like. Or wave in the camera and you'll be acknowledged. Mr. Chair, I am scanning and I don't, I don't see anybody requesting to speak.
Okay. Then without objection, we will close the public hearing. If there are no further questions or comments from the board, then I would hear a motion.
The question, if I can make a motion, please. To approve is presented in reference to 252-262 Depot Road, Zone L1, the petition of Michael Welsh, Revolution Milford LLC for a special exception for basketball training facility at Map 92, Block 705, Parcel 1E, of which MNDB LLC is the owner. Three proposed conditions. All parking, striping shall be in compliance with Sections 5.1, Diagrams 1 and 2. Number two, satisfying the requirements of the city engineer in his letters dated August 26 of 2021, requiring concrete curbs and aprons, and 252 and 262 being compliant with the City of Milford sewer connection standards. And the third, submission of an updated parking table accurately reflecting and or corroborating the parking table information on Sheet C-IM1.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Castignolli, is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, Meg, if you would, please call the roll.
Ms. Austin.
With the motion.
Mr. Castignolli.
Yes.
Mr. Kater.
With the motion.
Mr. Collegian.
With the motion.
Ms. Kearney.
With the motion.
Mr. Moore.
With the motion.
Mr. Mortimer.
With the motion.
Mr. Sadi.
The motion.
Mr. Zaharides.
With the motion.
And Chairman Krish.
I am also with the motion. A motion carries unanimously and we wish them good luck with their basketball training. Next order of business is old business. It is a proposed regulation change 21-5, Petition of John Nuff Esquire for changes to Article 3, Section 39, Shopping Center Design District, Article 5, Section 5.1, Parking and Loading Regulations, and Article 11, Section 11, two other terms. Vote by December 17. This was a public hearing, which is now closed. We kept this open only for board discussion or comments. So if the board would like to speak to this matter, now is our time.
Chairman Krish, if I may.
Yes.
Brian Collegian, I just want to state for the record that I have reviewed the video of the meeting that I missed the last meeting and I'm prepared to vote on any motion that's presented tonight.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yep, Ms. Kater.
Oh yeah, this Jim Kater, I, I viewed the video as well and I feel comfortable voting tonight as well.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to address this matter or questions or comments?
From the board.
From the board only, yep.
The chairman.
Yep.
I, I, I'm concerned because one of the issues is do we want housing at this location? And also do we want to allow Centennial to start something where they don't really know where they're going with it? And they just said that this is just kind of an opener, okay? And that along with the fact that we're really, you know, helping a business out here, which I don't know if that's the purview, you know, if this board should be doing that, okay? So I, 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 I feel, you know, these issues, you know, are, 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 you know, stopping me from voting for this.
Oh, great, thank you. I appreciate your comment. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Um, I'm kind of with Joe on that. I, I'm not, I do feel for them. I do think something needs to be done there. I think we're should be a little more concerned about this. I don't think housing should be up there at all. I'm not quite sure what the answer is. I could come up with ideas. That's not our job to figure ideas. I think they should try to find another approach instead of what they're doing is keep tweaking the same idea until they get to a point where we agree with that. It's okay. They keep giving us bits and pieces. I just don't think housing should be up there. Just, just my opinion. And, and also, and I do, and they brought up a couple of times, I do think this is very competitive with the downtown. I listened to what they said and they said that they want that to be a destination, outside, seating, restaurants, everything. It's like they're, they're going to compete with our fragile downtown, which is just right now starting to get a foothold and making a comeback. I, I think it's way more important. In my opinion, the mall 60 years ago ruined the downtown and it's getting back and they're going to do it again if we let this through. Now they could think of something creative. There's a lot of ideas, but that's for them to figure out.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yep, you want to go, Nancy?
Oh, go ahead, Carl. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have to agree with Joe and Jim on this. It's really too open-ended for me. Just knowing that they want to build housing there. The height of the housing they're talking about and the fact that they wanted to extract or tear down portions of the mall. I, I didn't feel comfortable with that, so that's my take.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, if I may. Housing is allowed there as it is. I mean, that's, that's not a change. We're only talking parking. What is the material change that they're looking at here? I don't, I don't really see anything to I don't know, too, too scary here. So maybe you can explain a little bit more exactly what this change is. David, maybe?
The size of the housing.
The, the, the main, the main difference the main, the main difference here is housing, housing is currently allowed. It's an allowable use. It's always been an allowable use. The form of the housing they're asking for to be different. Because for whatever reason, the current regulation ties the housing to the RMF 16 regulations, which basically makes it a, a two-story single or duplex house. So you can have a bunch of those on the property. So envision the parking lot being filled with duplexes. That's what the regulation allows, for better or for worse. So the change that they're asking for is to allow mixed-use housing. So it could be in the same building with commercials. And then they're asking for an actual height reduction because currently in that zone, you could have buildings that go up to 120 feet in height. So this proposal would limit the height to 85 feet for that mixed-use building. So let's change number one. Change number two is to change the minimum lot size for the mall to four acres. So that way they can effectively subdivide it, but it would still operate as, as one entity. For instance, a target is, has been subdivided off the property. It's its own entity. Again, you wouldn't know it because of functions is part of what's there. Then the next change that was proposed was how parking was calculated for the mall. Instead of it being gross square feet as it is now, it's, it's limited now to the areas of the mall that will actually have either the retail use or the sales use or the warehouse use, whatever that is, not the gross use. Because right now they're parking for all of their hallways and everything else where there's really no use, you know, quote unquote. And in a nutshell, that's what they're asking for. There's actually no, oh, and they're adding other uses based on the input from last year's application at public hearing and the informal meeting they had, which was with the POCD Subcommittee. And, you know, public input, you know, where people wanted, you know, them to consider other uses. They added those uses. So again, all they're doing is, is asking for a change in the rules. So whatever the rules are, they would know what the rules of the game are. That way they can then develop an application. Because there's no application here other than the regulation change. They're not saying they're going to build this or they're going to build that. It's just like every other zoning regulation in the city. Every zone in the city has regulations. And if it needs board approval, they're going to come in with an application that you are going to scrutinize through the eyes of those regulations. And I think it's, it's problematic to say, oh, this just benefits this property owner. Well, there are three other property owners in this zone. And this evening you made a change to the DO zone regulations, which basically benefit one or two property owners. It's, it's, it's the rules of the game. All they're asking for is a change to the regulations so they know what they can then develop to bring to you. And at that point, if you don't like what they're going to bring to you is developed by the regulations, then you don't have to approve it. But they're just asking for the regulation so they can bring that application to you.
Thank you. Yeah, and it seems that they're trying to implement something along the lines of what we suggested anyway, so. All right.
Okay.
For the explanation.
Thank you, John. Peggy?
You know, after listening to them for just like four or five You know, after s- listening to them for just like four or five times already, I look back and think I would really prefer, I would have preferred that we stayed with the original. And I know why we've, I voted it down because the first time they came before us, they really didn't have a plan for the future, even if it's just a plan. But I, and I don't mind, um, uh, apartments there, but I don't want them where they are now. I would have preferred them at their original spot that they chose, which was in the back of the parking lot. And I'm not sure whether they could think of a way to make that mall or that square thing or whatever they're calling it, the, you know, the thing that goes between the buildings and people are going to have art shows and all that stuff. How they could do that, but still have the apartments in the back? Because I would really like to see Sears not torn down. I would like to find a tenant. I would like this, hopefully the city could help find a tenant, a big tenant, a tenant that would bring jobs. An Amazon or a Google or a biotech company or somebody who, a big company. I think there a major push should be put on to find, um, a tenant for that part, and then let them build their apartments in the back. That's just my opinion.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, does anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I appreciate everybody's comments, and I think we're all on the same page, but, you know, they don't have a Google or a Amazon to come in and to say, okay, well, apartments in the back, apartments here, or tear down this, change that. That's not what we're looking at. We're looking at a regulation change. They don't have a solid plan to come before us. I think it's time to move on and vote on this. Like, we have dragged this out for weeks, and it's time for us to this is, we're here for regulation changes. Whatever their grand plan is, whatever it is down the road, we're, the, the task in front of us right now is a regulation change, and that is it.
Great. Okay, thank you.
I have to agree with Nancy a hundred percent. I think we, we really are dragging this out, and it's all preliminary. We, we we could talk to them and say, put those apartments in back. We'd rather have it that way. I mean, it, we're still what, very preliminary, so. I think we should definitely vote on this tonight.
Yeah, and, and I agree that we should have voted on this tonight, but, um, but the applicant did come with us with an extensive presentation. So to, um, and I think us as a board, we do have a right to to respond to what they presented to us. And when they come to us with suggestions of what they might do, we should, we should act upon that and discuss those type of things. And I don't think we should just talk about the regulations. We should talk about what is their grand plan, and that's my opinion.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, but all I'm saying is they have discussed it. We can't, we cannot vote now on something that could happen in the future. This is a regulation change because they can come before, when, if we change the regulations, they can come, we can decide yes or no, but like, they don't have that. And I understand the vision, and I I, I, I'm not saying I disagree with their vision by no stretch, but I get it. I understand it. I I've worked in towns where they've done this. But all I'm saying is we have before us right now a regulation change, and that's what we have to vote on. We don't have to vote on the visionary that here or there, whatever. And that's all I'm saying. Is we need to, to make a decision. Either we're going to change this regulation or we're not. That's all I'm saying. And I, and Carl, I mean, no disrespect whatsoever. I don't mean any disrespect to anybody on the board. But all I'm saying is, this is the regulation change. So either we pass this or we don't pass this. That's all I'm saying.
Uh, anyone else?
Yeah, me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I hear everybody, everyone makes foul points, and I agree with you, Nancy. I do think we should vote tonight. My concern though is, let me just ask hypothetically, if we don't change the zone, is there, what's the likelihood, uh, a project this magnitude of three hundred units would go in there? I kind of think I doubt it would happen. Now, you, they can build houses, but if that was the case, they would be doing it now, so there, I just, I'm afraid that we're going to change the zone and rule, regulation, and allow things in there. I know you say that if they come up with a project we don't like, but if they're following the, the zoning laws, there's I don't really think there's a lot we can do about it. It's like a house. If someone builds a house, if they're within the borders, they're following all the rules, we really have to, uh, stamp it, so it, it's not that we can later down the road decide, no, we don't like this project. You know, if they're following the regulations and we're setting the the regulations now for them, I don't know what their thought process is, and, you know, so I, I, I do want to vote for it. I'm, I'm prepared to vote for it. I just, I'm a little nervous that change in the, the zone will allow things in that we're not thinking of, so we do have to think down the road, what potentially is somebody going to come in? Are we going to open it up and they can do anything they want? We can't stop something if they're following the, the regulations.
Agreed.
For Mr. Chairman.
Agreed. Agreed, Jim. They, they do, they do go together. You can't make a plan without a regulation change, so. So they, they can't do their plan if we don't make the regulation change, so they do go together.
Yeah. What happens if their vision changes? Do they change the regulations? Okay?
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, that's, that's possible, right? Sure.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, why don't we have a complete vision and then a complete regulation change proposal before us? Okay, we don't.
Understood.
Agreed.
So the, you know, cer- certain things people are worried about, you know, what could come down the line. We what the language is now is that there's a maximum of three hundred units throughout the entire district, which incorporates the shop and stop and shop and the, and the other, um, you know. Yeah, so, uh, so that's one thing we know. They're not, if we do this now, they cannot build more than three hundred units. And if they do build mixed-use residential, which is the only way they'll be able to build residential, it has to be attached to the mall, and it has to have a esplanade, um, of thirty thousand square feet. You know, whatever specifics are in there are in there. So they can't like change the whole thing. We might not like it, and that's fine, but it's, it, it, there's not a whole lot um, down the road that is a maybe, a maybe if, you know. We would allow them to build a, uh, an office tower with biotech. We would allow, you know, with these regulation changes, these are the things that specifically would be allowed, you know, to try to create that work um, live-play, uh, concept. That's pretty common in, uh, in urban redevelopment. So there are, you know, if you look at the language, it's, you know, there, there are some parameters that they're not going to be able to go through. Also, we do have three choices. We can, um, approve, we can deny, or we can change it. They might not like our changes. We could say you could only have a hundred units, or we could do anything we wanted. I don't want to do, I don't want to speculate or do, uh, you know, um, you know, blue sky it too much, but, but there is, if there was a, a passion and a consensus for a passionate change in, in the language of this zone change, we totally have the right to do it. I'm not saying we should. I'm just saying that those are our three options. Approve, deny, or augment. Um, or alter. Um, so we do have a little bit of leeway, and I have no problem voting on this tonight. Um, with everybody, I get the sense that we have, um, gone down a long road on this, and I think, I think we did it for a lot of the right reasons. I think we are, uh, um, stakeholders in this. The city of Milford is, uh, it's a big, big property. It it does, um, it does somehow brand the city a little bit, and it, uh, it's a gateway in a sense, and and it will have impact on other neighborhoods like Mr. Cater is concerned about. Um, I'm not sure it would be a detriment, but he's convinced it is, and I'm not going to argue that point with him, um, because what's the difference of opinion? There's no crystal ball there, but, uh, so i- i- it is the case that if we deny this, we are still stakeholders of the mall, and, and, and it will be what it is until something comes up, and I get it. If they came with a master plan and said this is specifically we want what we want to do, and here's how we're going to do it, and we have biotech people on board, we have you know, all these restaurants that want to be part of a mixed use, and there's really a robust um, concept for us to, to, to embrace and, and to celebrate, then I'm sure it would be much easier for all of us to support it. Um, we don't have that, and I get that people are reticent about supporting it. Um, I think that, uh, just by common sense is telling me that they want what's the highest and best use for that property for themselves and for the city of Milford. If it doesn't work for the city of Milford, it's not going to work for them. And I think that, uh, that the, the protections that are in there with, um, with a limited number of housing, they offered up some workforce housing. Um, you know, there could be, build, build half the units and then build the same square footage in an office park and get a biotech tenant in there, or I use biotech as a, whatever, whoever, before you build the second phase uh, of the residential. I mean, we could approve that language here tonight. I'm not saying we should. I don't think I particularly have a, 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 uh, a proposed, um, motion that would, would address our concerns, but um, but we do have options, and, uh, we are, we are in, um, there's a certain symbiotic relationship between the city and the mall. We, we sort of float together, we sink together, so um, I'm in favor of giving them a shot, and I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a huge downside, um, but I'm one vote. So, that's by two cents. Anyone else care to contribute?
I just want to add that I guess, um, I mean, we can vote for or against, uh, you know, like, um, Chairman Quish was saying, but, uh, if we don't have mixed use, that, I guess, that, that means we're going to go with like a neighborhood style. I- i- if they put in housing, it'll be like a neighborhood style, uh.
And it's more like, I think it's more like garden apartments. I think they can go three stories. There's a forty-acre minimum, so they'd have to take it pretty much most of the parking lot, which I don't know how they'd do it with, uh, keeping the mall itself parked properly.
Right.
Um, within our limits, maybe some more parking garages or elevated, yeah, parking garages. I don't know what that would look like. Um, you know, specifically, uh, they might not get all three hundred, might get a hundred and eighty or two hundred or something, but I think what's permitted is three stories, kind of like, uh, kind of like what they call garden style. Um, is that accurate, Mr. Solkas?
Yeah, it's, it's, again, the RMF sixteen regulations, and, and again, they would have to be freestanding homes. They wouldn't be able to be, uh, mixed use. What they're asking for is the ability to have.
But they wouldn't be individual, single-family, freestanding. They'd be apartments, buildings.
Um, they wouldn't be apartment buildings.
But it's ours, like, let's, you, yeah, okay.
Yeah, they, they, like, you had it correct. You had it correct when you said garden-style apartments. That's
Yes, I did say.
Basically townhouses, uh, that's what you'd have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, and the other point I wanted to make is we're working with them pretty closely, and I think this board is pretty strongly committed to getting the right thing done, so I'm not afraid of moving forward and staying engaged, and I think that's the proper way to go, and it's that's just, uh,
Okay.
End of my two cents.
Any other?
From the public?
Done, sorry. This is for the board members only. We had public hearings four times, three times.
And the public hearing is closed, so.
Yeah, yeah, uh, that's right, but there's no more public comment. Um, the, uh, yeah, any other quick comments from the board? One thing I would say is whatever motion we come up with, um, let's make it in the affirmative move to approve. You can change it, be whatever language you want, or whatever makes the motion. And if you don't like it, then vote against it. But we've had issues before where a vote, a vote was taken in the negative, like, we vote to deny, and it was, didn't pass muster through the, through the, uh, city attorney's office. So, um.
You, you have, you have a prepared motion, affirmative, if you would like to use it, that's up to you.
And then again, if you felt like altering it, um, in any way, whoever wants to make a motion, you can do that. At this point, if there's no other, uh, comments or discussion, then I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I guess I will, uh, put the motion out there. Um, I don't see anything on, on the number of units. If, if we wanted to limit the units, the number of units, uh, could we add some language there?
The original limit already is at three hundred.
At three hundred. I mean, I don't see anything in, in the literature tonight, so. Um, so it seems that that's a big sticking point for people. If I'm correct in, in that assessment, I would say, uh.
May- maybe I can help clarify. Um, what's, what's on the motion tonight incorporates the, uh, the final proposal that they, uh, made uh, for the change, which includes the three hundred.
Okay.
What you have are some proposed modifications to the original language, uh, that, that are there, so, you know, there were.
Do we want to share that screen and everybody take a minute to just look at it?
Absolutely. Okay, you seeing the screen?
Yep.
Okay, so you have the, you have the original, um, uh, proposal, which is, uh, the, all, all the text for the entire change, and then the proposed modifications based on that text. Um, there was, you know, changing a comma to make it a semicolon, little things like that. Adding, uh, yards of front rear side, because they had just said yards. You want to make it clear that it's front rear side. Uh, correcting a reference number. There was an incorrect reference number to make it a correct reference.
That's what I mean.
Uh, changing, uh, uh, the language here, except that multifamily dwellings shall not so, no building or structure shall exceed ten stories in height, except that any building that contains multifamily dwelling shall not exceed five stories or eighty-five feet in height. The original language they had in there, uh, was different, uh, and it wasn't clear. This makes it clear. Um, we have here the, the, uh, you, uh, the proposal for having that, um, multi-use park, that big open space. You know, in their original proposal, it didn't have a, a, a size. So we're, we're saying that should be a minimum thirty-five thousand square feet, you know, which is a good size. So there it is. It will not be less than thirty-five thousand square feet. Um, they, uh, offered, uh, to the, uh, by themselves to have, um, uh, to add five percent of the dwelling units will be affordable, uh, in, uh, conjunction, uh, in, in accordance with the, uh, general statutes of eight thirty G. So we would be getting extra points, uh, for, uh, for the housing that would be there up to, you know, five percent. Um, and that's it, so.
Okay. So if I wanted to limit that, that to say two hundred units?
Uh, yeah, you would add that as a proposed modification.
Okay. All right, well, then I would like to, uh, propose, uh, regulation change of John enough Esquire for changes to Article three, section three point nine, Shopping Center Design District, Article five, section five point one, parking and loading regulations, and Article nine, uh, eleven, uh, section eleven point two. Uh, other terms. Could you put that back up, David? Because I don't have that.
Yeah, I was just pulling. I was trying to find the.
Oh, never mind, I got it.
Okay.
Um, three point nine point two point seven, change the comma after eating places to a semicolon, i.e. eating places, semicolon. Uh, three point nine point four point one and three point nine point four point two. Add the following parentheses after the word yards in four yards, front, rear, side, principal uses. Five yards, front, rear, side, accessory uses. Uh, three point nine point four point three, uh, parentheses one, change reference to three point nine point four point two, parentheses four to section three point nine point four point two. to Section 3.9.4.2. Also 3.9.4.3 Parentheses 3 Change Except that multifamily dwellings shall not to Except that any building that contains multifamily dwellings shall not. To read 3 Height, no building or structure shall exceed 10 stories or 120 feet in height, except that any building that contains multifamily dwellings shall not exceed five stories or 85 feet in height. Also 3.9.4.2 Parenthesis 7 Add the following to the second line. Open space of a minimum of 35,000 square feet shall be to read 7 Plaza area when any multifamily dwelling units are proposed, meaningful contiguous space open to the public of not less than 35,000 square feet shall be provided at grade level, improved with suitable landscape and hardscape features, including but not limited to decorative plantings, benches, seating areas, play spaces and public gathering areas. Also 3.9.4.3 Parentheses 11 No less than 5% of the dwelling units created shall be affordable housing as defined and in accordance with the Connecticut General Statute 8-30G. And also that's the limit of the amount of, the number of units shall be 200.
Thank you for all that work, John.
That was a big one.
Yes, it was. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sadie will second this to get to the votes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion prior to vote?
Yes, Mr. Quish, to the proponent, Mr. Mortimer, was it your motion to approve with conditions? I don't think you used the words at the very beginning.
Yes, it was.
All right, so if we could just make sure that it's motion to approve with conditions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, is it conditions or modifications? Those would be modifications.
Say that again, David?
Those are proposed modifications. You can call them modifications. They're not necessarily, they're not conditions, but I mean, you can, I would.
Oh, no, no, I think that's, let's go, let's get the language so it sticks, so modifications.
Proposed modifications. And if you, yeah, and if you wanted to add any other modifications, you can as well.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I guess anyone could, if they wanted to do further discussion and, and wanted us to consider further modifications, it would go through Mr. Mortimer for the motion and Mr. Sadie for the second to see if they were in alignment with those other additional modifications. And without, if there's further discussion, we'll hear it. If there's further modifications, we'll hear that. And if not, then we'll go to a vote. So it's up to the board this point to let us know if we want to discuss it more or we want to vote on it.
Vote.
Go ahead, Jim.
No vote.
Okay. Okay, so we're ready. Okay, Meg, if we could call the roll.
Ms. Austin.
Against the motion.
Mr. Castigny.
Oh.
Mr. Kater.
No.
Mr. Collegian.
Against the motion.
Ms. Kearney.
For the motion.
Mr. Moore.
Against the motion.
Mr. Mortimer.
For the motion.
Mr. Sadie.
Against the motion.
Mr. Zagaridis.
Against the motion.
And Chairman Quish.
I'm with the motion.
Thank you.
Till the motion fails, this matter is put to bed. Thank you all for the many hours of consideration. I do appreciate your thoughts. Okay, next order of business is liaison reports. Seeing none, subcommittee reports. We do have two meetings coming up tomorrow and the next night for the P O C D. The city has put out a request for qualifications. We received four. These are requests for qualifications for consultants for the plan of conservation and development. We received four responses. The P O C D committee has chosen two to hear a presentation, one each night for tomorrow and Thursday. At what point we will we'll make a decision and share that with the board and we'll start working together with the entire board, the P O C D committee separately and the public on getting what we hope to be a great plan of conservation and development for the city of Melford. The regulation subcommittee does not have a meeting set up at this point, but we will have one next month. Chair's report, nothing more than just just thanking everybody for their patience with and attention to the proposed zone change for the for the mall property. And I, yeah, I mean, it seems to me we'll probably be hearing more. I mean, they need to do something, so it may be smart for them to let us hire a consultant and have a charrette at their expense and plan something together and plan it so that the board and the public sees a robust, full master plan and propose that way, but they may not like that either. Anyway, that's my report.
Before you go to staff, the question, do we, it's either the staff report or you, any word on education for the board? Any educational seminars? I know there was the changes we were talking about. We thought there might be some education coming up.
We'll leave that to the staff report, David.
I guess I have a staff report now. The, that requirement, I believe, doesn't take effect until next year, but there's, having said that, we always make when, when it's available, education available to you. So the next time, and usually those education sessions are either run through U, UConn or the Connecticut Bar or Wesleyan in a court with, working with the state. So the next time one of those comes up, I will let the board know and you, you know, even before the law takes effect, as always, some members here have already done this, taking advantage of the educational opportunities when they present themselves.
Okay. Any further staff report?
None this evening.
Okay. Did we, no, we did not approve the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of 9:21? Okay, without objection, they're approved. And I would again, thank everyone else and we are adjourned. Good night.
Thank you all.
Oh, Yankees.
Go Red Sox.